Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Would you please call the roll?
Mary McCauley.
Here.
Scott Gingold.
Here.
Matt Rogers.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
With six members present, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz and planning and zoning administrator Demir Latinovich. This is a formal meeting and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on all documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you may be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We do have three items on the agenda this evening. I know one of the cases has requested a continuance, but the first item is 1303 Rosalie Street is the applicant here. The matter 2422 Hastings Avenue has requested a continuance, and I don't see the applicant from 1610 Fowler here. If he does not show up when it's time to hear the case, we'll grant a continuance because something may have come up. But with that, we will move into the first item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes from December 15th. Has everyone had an opportunity to read them and are there any changes? There was one change I had noted on page two underneath the list of four bullet points where it says Ms. McCauley disclosed she had worked with the architect in the past, but it would her decision on this case. I don't know. I think it would not affect her decision on this case. It's probably missing from in there.
Yeah, I believe that that's correct, Matt. That's essentially what I said.
So with that change, are there any other changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that edit?
A move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With six votes in favor, the meetings, the minutes will be approved. With that, we will move into the first item on our agenda, an old business, which is 1303 Rosalie Street, and I would ask that that please be read into the record.
Nate Rosalie, contractor, applies for major zoning relief to construct an enclosed porch in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The applicant proposes a five-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A4. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation applications submitted October 30th, 2015, standards form, survey, site plans, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and DAPR meeting minutes of November 18th, 2015.
Thank you. With that, I will ask that anyone who may be speaking to us in this matter, please be sworn at this time by raising their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you would please come up to the lectern and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nate Rosalie. My personal address or the property address? Property address is 1303 Rosalie Street.
All right. And if you would please tell us about your -- oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm Joe Berghammer, the resident at 1303 Rosalie Street. My family.
If you would please tell us about the proposal.
So basically, the proposal is to construct a new porch where the existing porch is. That's slightly larger to accommodate, you know, a table for eating. The existing porch is kind of small, and the stairs are at one side and the entry to the porch to the kitchen is at the other, so it basically functions as a hallway. So we're looking to enlarge it to accommodate a table for eating. And I brought some printouts I can pass out if you guys need that. I don't know what you guys have seen on it so far.
Are they different than what was submitted in the packet?
Yeah, there's a couple, a couple extra pieces.
Because it's something different than in the packet and you plan on referring to it, yes, we would like copies.
Okay. So yeah, it's, one is the existing, plan view of the existing porch, and then the other one is the proposed with all the dimensions drawn on it. Do I have a bunch? Thank you.
So before you continue, I'm going to note those for the record. So I'm receiving two documents. The first one is dated 11/25/15, proposed plan dimensions for the rear porch plan. And the other one is the existing plan dimensions, and I'm going to label those as applicant exhibit A and B.
There's actually a third, which I don't know if it'll be necessary, but it's basically a drawing with those two overlaid on top of each other.
Okay. If you want to give me that, I'll mark it applicant exhibit C. Thank you.
Can I ask the owner how long he's owned the house? Is this a recent acquisition or have you been in the house for a while?
We've been there for a while. Let me just think. My daughter's 12. We moved in there when she was one, so we've been there 11 years.
That's a long time.
So.
All right. Mr. Rosalie, if you'd like to walk us through what you've handed us or just discuss the proposal in general.
Okay. So basically, you can see it from the existing that the door to the kitchen, in order to get out through the stairs, the existing stairs, you basically use that space as a hall. And so for the proposed, we put the stairs, so it's more of a straight shot out to the exterior, so that there would actually be a spot for a table. And then, so that would put the, it would encroach on the lot line an additional two feet to the north.
Can you explain the, since it's, particularly since it's so close to the neighboring property, explain the drainage plan for the addition?
The drainage plan, you mean where the, I guess the drainage plan would be basically the same as the existing, which would be down spots down. And then there, it's a corner lot, so that there's the side street, Asbury, would be where the, any water from that, that small roof section would go. So yeah, it wouldn't go toward a neighbor.
So that the down spot in the northwest corner of the addition would actually be headed east?
Correct. Yeah, the whole.
Not north towards the property line?
No, as is now. I didn't do any grade, check the grade at the neighbor's property, but on the, on this piece of property, it all kind of, the grade goes toward Asbury. It doesn't go, you know, toward the alley like typically it would.
When I look at the exterior elevation, it appears as though there's some portion of the second floor that's over the existing.
Yes.
Porch.
That is an unknown at this point. So hopefully.
What's unknown, if it's there or how you're supporting it?
Well, no, how that's supported. So, I mean, my assumption is that there's a beam there, or it's a cantilever actually. The floor's just cantilever over.
Yeah.
Because there's no beam or anything structural inside of the existing porch.
So there's really a gap there between the existing roof and the wall above? Or does that wall continue straight down?
I've got photos I can show you of, which may be more helpful, but which one are you looking at?
I'm more curious than anything. The north elevation.
Let me flip through here.
I think I know which one you're looking at.
Yeah.
This is Joe Berghammer. Are you talking about the last page, this part here?
Oh, we don't have that page. No.
Can you show us on yours what you're talking about? Sorry, Ms. Burns.
I can't. That's fine. So it's right there.
Yeah, that is how it is now.
So this is just sort of floating or did they actually build that down onto it?
I think that's actually a mistake.
The wall comes down? Okay.
Let me show you the photo.
Okay, thanks. And can I ask another question? In the northeast corner of the first floor, where it says existing basement bedroom?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's what you actually mean. What room is that?
It is an office. It's a basement. Pardon?
No, on the first floor.
On the first floor.
Yeah. So you have a kitchen and the powder room, stairs to the basement, and then further east.
It's a door?
Nope.
Something like what you're saying.
Right there, that room.
That is actually a.
That's the living room.
This is the living room on the east side? Okay. Thanks.
Well, he might have drawn in the basement window. That might be the basement window.
Yeah, I think he's got it on multiple plans, but that's fine.
If you're going to come up, just make sure that you're speaking into a microphone just to make sure that we're covering all discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So if I can, on the first floor, here is, this is the living room.
Okay.
And on the basement, there's an office there.
Okay.
But it's not a bedroom in either. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is nice.
So yeah, here's, I guess, some more photos.
I'm going to mark those as exhibit, and can we keep those?
Oh, there's one, there's a copy of each. There's one page. It's only one page. There are five copies of the same page.
So I'm going to mark these, this, since it reaches to, reaches me as applicant's D, and note that there is a small, this is labeled A 0.1, with three photos running down the left-hand side of the page, and a small architectural site plan on the right, which shows the condition of the property. Were these photos taken by you?
The architect.
And do you know when they were taken?
Probably would have been early fall, late summer.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, did these represent the conditions that currently exist at the property?
You would have to.
Yes.
So nothing's changed really from what we see here?
Nothing's changed. My kid's dug a hole, but we filled it in.
That's fine. All right, thank you.
A small hole.
I think I saw maybe in the, in the DAPR meeting minutes that you're planning to remove the sidewalk and replace it with pavers. Are those permeable?
The pavers themselves, it would be like unilock-type product, so there would be drains between. It wouldn't be like stamped concrete or anything like that.
Is this a sidewalk on the west side?
It would be, the sidewalk on the west would be eliminated, and then there'd be a pavers from the garage around to the porch, and then a at-grade terrace where the porch stairs come down.
Okay.
And I'm assuming since, this is a question for staff, I'm assuming since we are not looking at a impervious surface thing, that everything is kind of trading, swapping one for the other?
Correct. I noticed on sheet A01 that based on your calculations, that you're actually having a net reduction in your impervious surface, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's small, but.
Doesn't matter. I mean, every little bit helps, and I appreciate the effort on that.
Additionally, in the notes from DAPR, it indicated that you might try to get some letters of support from neighbors.
Yeah, go ahead. Does mind if I approach? Thanks for your question. So how about you do your thing and then I'll explain them?
So I have two letters which are being presented, one from Adam Bezark and one from Kenneth One dated from Janu-, the Torval letter is dated January 3rd, 2016, and the Bezark letter is dated November 27th, 2015. So I'm going to mark these as, I think I'm at E and F.
And to the best of your knowledge, you haven't had any complaints or concerns from neighbors about the alterations?
No, we haven't had any. No concerns. And the one letter is for the neighbors to our north. That's the letter from November. We were originally going to meet with you all in December, but schedules didn't work. And then the other letter is for our neighbor immediately to the west. And we, our block is very amicable, so the people on the block get along. So it's why we stay. One other thing that I might add is if you see on the plans, we're not, in my mind, we're not trying to do that much, that we're not extending the porch all the way to the full length of the house. We're adding a few feet in a couple of directions. We just want to be able to fit in a small table that we could put four people around to eat. So it's, and the reason we're not doing that much is we don't want to cover those other windows with the porch. We weren't being altruistic, but in the end, we're really not, I don't feel we're doing that much different than what's already there.
And I know there was comment somewhere about, I don't remember where, so I may not get it exactly right, removing a door, putting an egress window into the basement because of the removal of a door. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, there's a door that's kind of a, on a landing halfway up from the basement, and so it's at grade level. That's going to be kind of where the, the new porch is going to be in the same area, so we're going to have to eliminate that door and then put a new egress, basement egress window in.
If not, I will ask if there is anyone here who, anyone else who wish to speak to us on the matter of 1303 Rosalie? Seeing none, I'll ask if you have anything you'd like to say in summation before we close the record and begin deliberation.
I'll just go first, and I'll just say thanks. I know you guys don't get paid a lot, so thanks for taking your time.
You're implying we get paid something.
Great.
I guess, yeah, just thanks for your time, and if you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer, but that's it.
Thank you. You can go ahead and have a seat if you'd like. And with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. Yep, thank you. General thoughts before we go through the standards?
Sure. I'm pleased with the restraint shown by the homeowner and their architect. It is a very modest addition, and it's just about as big as it can, it's about as small as it can be to accommodate a table and a walkway through the room.
I also, I agree with the sentiment, and I also think I like the removal of the sidewalk with a replacement of pavers as an offset of sorts against the additional encroachment on the, both on the overall impervious surface space, but also on the, on the rest of this, that corner yard.
With that, we do have a set of standards. There are seven standards that we must find are met for us to approve a proposed project. We'll walk through those standards. The first one being the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. We've heard no testimony that, that I believe would cause a, an impact on the neighboring properties. As we've discussed, the fact that some of the impervious surface is being removed and sort of swapped around different places, and there is a drainage plan that will send all rainwater away from the neighboring property to the north is very nice, and also the fact that we have received letters from the two neighbors who would be most impacted stating that they are in support of the proposal, I believe that this standard is met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We do find from time to time that properties that have been built in Evanston over the years need to have modernizations done to them. This is a very modest change, but something that we would expect to happen from time to time to some of our older properties, and make them more viable for the quote-unquote "modern" family. So I believe that that standard is met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is one of our lots, the corner lots that often get subdivided, making two substandard lots out of what was a larger lot. And looking at the way the house currently sits on the property, I think it's less than eight feet from the property line, and so any sort of change is going to have some encroachment into, any change would have encroachment into the 30-foot backyard, which doesn't exist at this particular property, so that standard is met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. This is a decrepit porch that seems to be having some, some issues in terms of leaking water, just in general upkeep through no fault of the owner, just property's age. And the fact that they would be allowed by right to build the same exact porch allows them to build something that really doesn't fit in with their, their lifestyle, and for the, the minor change that they are requesting, I believe that standard number four would be met by allowing this project to move forward. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. With this particular standard, I don't see how the property owners are going to extract additional income by increasing their porch by, I think probably around 80 square feet or something like that. So I believe that standard is met. Number six, alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. We have heard from the homeowner that they have lived in this location for 11 years. And looking at the structure, I believe that this particular porch probably predates their moving into it. And so by that fault, or by that logic, they're, they've had no interest in creating the porch that currently exists there, and so standard number six is met. And standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is the one where a lot of projects kind of tend to fall apart for us, but in this particular case, because of the fact that it is a modest increase in the overall size of the property, and we have seen attempts made to decrease the impervious surface, I believe that the standard is met and that the minimum has been, this is the minimum that can be made and allow those properties still to be viable. With that, is everyone in agreement with my findings on standards?
Yes.
Yes.
So I will ask if there is a motion to approve the project for 1303 Rosalie Street?
I move in the matter ZBA 15ZMJV-0099 with respect to 1303 Rosalie Street that we approve the variation requested on the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents and testimony submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With six votes in favor, the project is approved, and you can work with staff on what your next steps will be. Good luck with your project. The second item on our agenda, which is 2422 Hastings Avenue, has requested a continuance. My understanding is they have to appear before DAPR again with some changes, which is why they're being pushed off our agenda. Their request has been to continue it to February 2nd, so is there a motion for that?
I make a motion that we continue ZBA 15ZMJV-0110 2422 Hastings to the next meeting, which is the second.
It's not actually our next meeting, but it will be our meeting on February.
On February 2nd.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of continuing case 2422 Hastings to our February 2nd meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With six votes in favor and zero against, it will be continued till that meeting. The last item on our agenda is 1610 Fowler Avenue. Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have the applicant? The applicant does not appear to be here. I will note for the record, it is 7:30, 30 minutes after we've begun our meeting. I will ask if there is a motion to continue that until such time that we can find out if they're moving forward with this particular case?
We need a date certain if you do want to continue it?
We'll continue it to all our next meeting, and if they want to drop the case, they can withdraw the case, or we can hear it at that time. So our next meeting will be on the 19th?
26th.
26th, on January 26th. So is there a motion to continue that meeting, or that matter till the 26th?
I would move that we move the 1610 Fowler meeting to the 26th of January.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So with a vote of six in favor, that matter will be continued till our meeting on the So with that, the other business that we had on our agenda for this evening is election of a vice chair. Has anyone given consideration to serving as vice chair?
I nominate Mary Beth Burns.
Second.
There you go.
Would you be willing to serve, Mary Beth?
I'd be happy to.
All right. So we have a nomination on the floor for Mary Beth Burns and is seconded. All those in favor of electing Mary Beth Burns to serve as vice chair, please say aye.
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 My aye was very emphatic.
So there are five ayes and one very emphatic aye. So Mary Beth will serve as our vice chair until the time that I leave the board in June, in which case I don't know what's going to happen.
What about the liaison to the Economic Development Committee?
I was elected to that last.
Oh, so you get to keep doing that?
Yes.
Oh, yay.
Until June.
What's that?
Until June.
Until June, okay.
I only. I only serve because of the, of the chairmanship here.
Oh, so this was for vice chair?
This was for vice chair of this board.
Oh, that's great. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Path to greatness.
Is there any other matter to be brought before the board?
Just that if you haven't looked already, at the end, very end of the packet is the annual report of everything that you guys looked at in the last year. Make sure and take a look at all of the businesses that you guys helped open. The City of Evanston greatly thanks you for all of the time that you put in.
Plus, Matt has a great letter back there that I really appreciated reading.
Yes, I get to write those every year.
That was great.
If there's no other matter to be brought before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Just to mention that our next meeting is on the 26th, that is, three weeks from now, not the normal two weeks, and then we do have a meeting back on our regular schedule after that, so we will have back-to-back meeting weeks. See you there.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjournment until our meeting on the 26th of January, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.